Mr. President.
(laughing).
Yes, yes, yes.
We will start with the flag. I want to be in the flag of the United States of America and to the Capitol where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
We're all off.
Statement of the Board President. The importance of provisions of the Open Public Act, meaning that NJSA 1046, 10, uh, that's 46, ER 1975, C231, as intended, 2006, C72, Asbury Park, whatever education is applied, adequate notice of this meeting by sending the location and extended number, the intended of this meeting to the Asbury Park press, the new poster on January 3rd, 2025, five email copies, notice have also been placed in administration building, Golden Board, district schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, filed a secret on January 3rd, 2025. As Asbury Park School, this would buy all students, all students with comprehensive and progressive education, where everyone produces skill and character, is seen in an adverse following goal of society. Roll call.
Ms. Ackerman?
Yep.
Ms. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Will?
Here.
Ms. LaRaca?
There.
Ms. Lysinski?
Here.
Dr. Pennon?
Here.
Ms. Rakes?
Here.
Ms. Glassman?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Thank you.
We're going to start our presentations on the board of the super committee.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
No, it's not working. Ask. Well.
It's working through love.
Okay, so the lights aren't really working right now, but what we're gonna do, start the night off, we're gonna do presentation of the staff and student of the month, starting with Mr. Medina at the high school.
All right, so I will start with our student of the month. This young man, at this, I think, almost at this time last year, he received student of the month for December or in January. I am particularly proud of this young man as he has demonstrated everything we want in a student, everything we want in an Asbury Park High School citizen. And one of the things, as I was thinking about what I'd like to say, and I'm gonna read some excerpts from the teachers, but we often talk about filling up the cups of our students pouring into us. This young man has poured into the cups of the adults. He is generous, generous, he is caring, he is bright, he is talented. Our student of the month is another than Jason Gross. (applause). I wanna read just a couple of excerpts from his teachers. Jason is an accomplished musician, a beautiful singer, a very talented, playing the keyboard and drums, and our teacher, one of our teachers, Ms. Elgar, is impressed that Jason has perfect pitch. He also is composing his own music. And in art class, Ms. Rosker has said that he is a great cartoonist and always finds creative ways to bring out his imagination. He's successful in his extracurricular endeavors, and Jason does remarkable things using the computer as well. So I'm very proud. This gives me personal pleasure to introduce Jason as our student of the month. (applause). And our athlete of the month is a soccer player who has been, one of our leader, excuse me, baller, baller, who has been one of our leaders in what has been one of the more successful teams that we've had in years, Brian Cruz Jose. So Brian, as I mentioned, is one of our most successful ballers. He has bowled a race several 200-plus games. He is top ranked. He has guided his team also to a possible state championship, and most impressive, impressively, he is holding a 3.9 GPA top three. And he plays golf as much. And, as certainly, certainly not least, our staff member of the month is someone I count on literally every day, almost every minute of the day, who guides me, who keeps me on track, who has understood all of my little quirks and has learned how to direct me in completing certain tasks. I'm particularly proud of her because of her, not only her intelligence and her grit, but she is truly caring, she truly gives everything she has from the staff of Asbury Park High School, and it is a, a complete pleasure to introduce Ms. Adenae Polos. She, she is, she is, as I said, she has, uh, the, the wits, the, the leadership, and as you can see, she's well regarded.
Yes, yeah.
Um, her leadership is something that I count on every single day. And as with Jason and our, and our athlete of the month, they, they demonstrate exactly what it is to be a blue visual. I'm very proud of this young lady here, and I'm, I'm grateful for being able to count her. So again, once again, Ms. Adenae. (applause).
At this time, I call Mr. Lockery of MLK Middle School, introduce his staff student of the month.
For our athlete of the month, we were gonna honor for the next month because they had death in the family, so we're gonna just ask that we keep them in our prayers and we'll honor Jalen Reese at our next board meeting, that they ask, the parents ask respectfully, could they be honored with the family, because that was the first time they've received such an honor. So we're gonna hold Jalen Reese's applause and honors for our next board meeting, all right? Our student of the month, and this young lady is very special. I can't say how infectious her smile is. Every day you will get either a smile or a hug at the, at the door. She's one of our student ambassadors. She works with fundraising at our school. She participates heavily with the bagel sales each and every day that they, not every day, but monthly, where we do bagel sales and we give bagels out to our staff members, very influential in helping us organize, selling the goods, collecting the money, counting the money, making sure inventory is good. Overall scholar in all of our classrooms, whether it's science, math, PLA, or STEM, you see her participating at high levels, positive energy, and like I said, always does it with a smile. So at this time, we are happy to honor with her teacher. We want Ms. Kelly to come up as well, Masilo Alcatera Hernandez. Amen. (applause). And she enjoys a big smile, yes, every day, yes. Did you hear the choice of, 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 yes, we're doing it? Our next, our teacher of the month, I share a lot in common with this teacher, because this teacher happens to be a math teacher. Every time I go into the classroom, whether it's center work, whether it's group work, whether it's guided instruction, it's, it's no task too large for this teacher. She's involved with the sunshine club, she brings a lot of sunshine to our building, she actually leads the sunshine club. She does monthly events for all of our staff and teachers to keep smiles on their faces. She's our photographer, so she's in charge of the yearbook and photography, where she takes outstanding pictures at each and every event. You have to see some of the newsletters that are created with the imaging and the verbiage that goes into these newsletters. And then in terms of a teacher leader, she will support our colleagues. We recently had a very new math teacher, that she was very instrumental in giving a lot of support and, and best practices to, 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 to support our new math teacher. But overall, I have to say that we would not be in the position that we are, we are currently in, in our, with mathematics at the middle school if it wasn't for Ms. Miles. So at this time, we're gonna try to do, we're gonna try to, we're gonna do, 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 we're[1635.12] The artificial intelligence policy.
Yeah, yeah.
Which I suggest that the policy committee review closely. I did that for another district, and there are some concerns about your ability to implement what's exactly written in Strauss's policy as it's written, so.
We also have a suggestion from the next policy committee about the new regulations for the immigration. I think, I know the Department of Education put a bulletin out to all the school districts, et cetera, about their own guidance that they have, and I think that might be important information to be putting on our website so that parents can look and even, you know, other people in the community can see what the DOE has set up just to follow, make sure people have training, that there are things that people need to know, and that we do start looking at a new policy so we can also incorporate in our district.
Yeah, I think that that's a great point, Ms. Lysinski. There is a lot of talk in the school attorney circles about how we're going to handle and counsel our clients. I have had discussions already with Mr. Gribino, just kind of framework discussions about what to do should immigration enforcement officers come to the school building. That's something that I'll continue to work through and talk through the administration with, especially given the demographics here that is a big concern in Asbury Park. And we want to do whatever we can to protect our children as best we can.
And maybe there might have to be some sort of update to our MOU, your MOU, with law enforcement, our community law enforcement.
Yeah, and great point again, but also just understanding, realizing that immigration is controlled through the federal government, and our MOU is with local law enforcement, so.
Well, yeah, because there are some interesting points in the DOE notice that different warrants and things aren't necessarily, right, coming to us through the center.
And for everyone in the audience and for those who are listening at home, I suggest that you look at the DOE website with regard specifically, they set up a page within their website to address immigration enforcement and related concerns at schools and other sensitive places. And that's something that, you know, we're watching very closely as our world starts to change. Yeah, Ms. Lysinski, there's guidance from New Jersey DOE on this subject, and I'm asking Michael and the rest of the committee to really look at those policies. And IP, can you make sure anything that needs to be updated gets immediately to the committee so we can vote on it?
I had a question, just thirty-thousand-foot view, right? What authority do federal immigration enforcement agents have if they approach a school?
That's a great question, and one that is somewhat gray and unclear. And so, you know, there is some talk about an immigration warrant and how that's potentially different from a warrant that we see from our local law enforcement, whether or not that's applicable or needs to be followed if it's not signed by a judge. Whether or not an immigration warrant signed by an immigration judge can compel the school district to act a certain way is untested. But I'm here to offer my best guidance that I possibly can on a matter that is really fluid and is developing. Right now, I just read an article on it, and our attorney is right. The suggestions are coming out, and maybe asking you this question. One, on that warrant situation, advise that we should immediately call our attorney to review any existence of ICE or any federal agencies coming into the building to make sure that our attorney first confirms these issues. Can the superintendent be advised to work with you on that? Yes, and we've already discussed this, he and I. To the extent that any immigration enforcement officers come to the district, it's expected that the building administrator will call the superintendent, who will in turn call me, and that they will not let anyone in further than a vestibule, if you will, without first speaking with me. Quite frankly, one of the calls that I would make is to county prosecutor, and I would also be calling the head of the Division of Criminal Justice for New Jersey for some guidance as well because there is documentation that would indicate that he or she should also receive notification to the extent that immigration enforcement officers come to the district. Again, our major goal here and our priority's always been student safety, health, and welfare. And we're not going to do anything that's going to negatively impact students. That's just not what we're here for. And so, we're going to work within those lines and have that be our North Star, no more to children. And that's all I can say at this point. Any other questions? The finance committee?
The finance committee met last Thursday. We had four key topics. The first subject that we discussed was grants applied for and received by the district. Mrs. Roman Santos, who is the grant writer and administrator, made a presentation to the committee. For this school year, year-to-date, she's gotten about $4 million in grants, some are recurring grants, federal grants that she regularly applies for each year. Some of these, she reported to us that a lot of the grant process has become more competitive, and some grants that we've received in the past, we were not successful with. This time, she also discussed with us the process by which she determines what grants she'll apply for and what subject area she'll go to. And typically, she will meet with the administrators and then meet with each of the principals in the schools. And hopefully, those principals have brought up from the teachers the sorts of programs or materials or things like that that they need for their use during the school year. And if it's specific programs, she'll look for specific grants geared to that. If it's broader than that, she will try to work creatively to see what money might be available that can fit into the needs of the district. During the conversation, we sort of came to the conclusion that the communication could be better from the teachers to the principals to her because we are aware of certain programs that some of the schools desired, but it did not reach her. And so, she didn't apply for certain programming funds that she otherwise would have. So she's going to work on enhancing the communication and that process. We then reviewed with Ms. Brown the budget process for the forthcoming year and where she stands and how she starts each stage of that process. Specifically, we started discussing some of the areas that she's going to be focusing on, one of which is the health insurance plan, to see if there are opportunities for any significant savings by moving off of the state health plan onto a private plan. So she will come back with that. We also started to talk about some of the proposals that the monitor has made to look at for cost reductions. Some programming, some outsourcing, and some sales. And we discussed charter school enrollment. And I will report for the public that we had our first piece of good news in our litigation with the charter schools that the administrative law judge ruled largely in favor of the Asbury Park School District and asked that the Department of Education set up a process in a neutral location for a two-week period to verify the residencies of the students of the charter schools to confirm that in fact that they are Asbury Park residents and that the public funds of Asbury Park are being used to educate Asbury Park children. This is not a final decision yet. The Department of Education can reject this opinion, in which case, we will be considering appealing that. For each of the students at the charter schools that are not verified as Asbury residents, for the 23-24 school year, we will receive back 50% of the funds that we paid to the charter schools. And for the 24-25 year, this current year, we'll receive back 100% of those funds that we've paid out already. That's my report.
Any questions? Buildings and grounds?
Buildings and grounds met January... Okay. So, we're discussing, we're going to discuss with them about making sure that the court is in a place that makes sense, especially if we're looking at the Obama School and the property surrounding it and what to do with it. But it's good to know that they're on the, they're working on it. So then there is a high school updating. There's a media project that used SDA funds. That's 80% done, and we're waiting on furniture. Are we still waiting on furniture? Okay.
That is for the esports, the one that they're doing. And media furniture from the ESR projects from last year, so it's combined.
Okay, great.
Almost there.
Okay, thank you so much. And there was no use of facilities request? And that was it? That concludes my report.
Joe, it looked like there were three courts there when I saw it.
What's that?
It looks like there were three because they used the two, there were two already, and then they added extra.
Yeah. And it's more about kind of, if you notice, they put it kind of like right in the center of the green area between Obama and, or where the Christmas trees were.
Right, and so that's off to the side, that's closer to the...
A little bit, yeah, right. We're, we want, so we asked them to take a, to pause for a second, for a moment, and see if it could be moved a little bit...
East.
Further east, right. I've got my directions messed up. A little bit east and to possibly reduce it to two courts. So we're going to see, to be continued.
Who made the decision to reduce it? Because I thought our agreement was to, the board agreed to allow them to extend it to three. We've never discussed reducing it back to two as a board.
It was, right, and it was just done in Buildings and Grounds having a conversation about it. So we're going to have to vote on that if we want to change the MOU.
I mean, they already started, they got it all prepared for three courts. They, that's, I mean, I would hate to break it down to two courts. If they have the money for three, I think it's beneficial for the children to have three courts as opposed to two. And if they have the money, why not?
Correct. Any other discussion about it?
Well, I thought they're going to be taking a little bit of time because of the weather. I don't think they're going to do construction during the wintertime. No, they were cleaning the area to prepare.
They put the substrate down. They were, they were back home, they had a big pile of the substrate. They were putting down the gravel and whatever composite they have to use to start it. They've already started. They have the subsurface down already. That's quite a bit of money they put in there.
They flattened, they flattened the dirt, and it's my understanding that it's just paint now that they have to put there. And then obviously, you know...
Right, so they're, they're kind of done, except for some paint.
Yeah.
So they're almost done.
Right.
Terrific, three courts.
Yep. Well, let's, if we're okay with still three courts, then we'll, we'll keep that. I'm, I, my, I think the concern, the conversation that was had at Buildings and Grounds was one about the property that it's on and how that's, how that's going to look in the future. And if those, we want to make sure those courts are there for the long term, right?
They're shifted to the side, they're closer to the pavilion. They're not, they didn't move. They haven't relocated the original courts. They're still, those two courts are still there. And then they added the extra one east of that.
The one over there, right.
Right, so, east, not west.
Any other questions?
Joe, my recollection, the committee, everyone there was kind of unanimous about the little league signage being increased. Can we just get back to the community and let him know that's okay to go?
Yeah, we'll let him know. As long as it's no sponsors that are kind of like, you know...
Right, every sign we run through the...
We don't want marble or cigarettes signs up, so. That's it.
Any questions? If there's no other questions, finance would like to follow up with something else.
Sorry, I forgot two things that I wanted to mention again. Just to restate that this is not a final decision by the administrative law judge on college chief. So the monthly amounts that are on the bills list still remain at issue. That's the first thing. And the second thing that I wanted to mention was the last part of the discussion. The flip side of the charter school enrollment is we just talked about the need to do a better job of recruiting students and bringing them into district and talking about the value of an education in this school district. And we talked about the need to improve our social media outreach because it's going to be a better source for families than articles in a newspaper, because a lot of people just don't read newspapers anymore. But we still really need to make a concerted effort to increase enrollment because, of course, the greater enrollment that we have, the more state funding we get.
If I can, I just heard with regard to advertisements being placed on school facilities, this is news to me. But I want to make a suggestion, if I may, that the policy committee consider a board policy on that because...
We have one.
But my concern is that...
Accountability rights, we do have a policy on signage.
Okay. But my concern, though, is that since it's not a board activity, that you're essentially using, allowing the use of the facilities by an outside organization who's going to post signage temporarily on district facilities, I would suggest that the policy address that because you may have controversial or other types of businesses, events, or situations that are advertised that wouldn't necessarily be appropriate for a school set. And the fact that it is our property, we are responsible for it. And so I would just want to make sure that there's a vetted process or at least a review process by which the board could look at the advertisements that are being proposed and say yes or no. Because if we don't have controls over it, then who are we to say yes or no to anything?
Signage would come to Buildings and Grounds Committee or...
No, policy.
Oh, policy.
No, no, the...
Policy, right.
No, the request many was that they would seek approval, and I thought unanimous, we said that it would go to the acting superintendent who would review every sign.
Correct.
I just suggest that a process be put in place where not only is it an open process, but that, you know, it's one that is non-biased, if you will. It takes into account the fact that we are a public school district. So you wouldn't want, for example, you know, a, pardon my being a little rough here, but you wouldn't want an advertisement for an exotic dancing place on your, but if you don't have systems and controls in place for an outside organization who's going to use your facilities, you might have that.
May I suggest that we add it to the facility use form? And we can state policy, whatever, from the accountability rights for signage and that the board has to provide a picture or whatever the sign is, and it's approved with the facility use. Maybe that's an easy way to go around it.
That makes perfect sense to me.
And we have time before the season starts, so the next...
Hold on, just in our, in our meeting, we discussed that. And my concern was what was going to be on those signs? Who was going to be advertising? And we had the final say as if yes or no depending on what ramifications can happen because of those signs. So we did discuss that.
Yeah, so far the signs they've used hasn't, haven't been offensive that I've seen, but they're local businesses, but yeah, definitely.
You never know.
Sorry, so just to close the loop on that, can we like, can we have a motion maybe that the policy committee will pull up the relevant policies, review them, update them, run them by council, and then we review them for approval, or...
Yeah, you wouldn't need a motion for that. I would just suggest that the policy chair add that item to their agenda for the next policy committee meeting.
Maybe, maybe we, Mr. Brown can draw something or with Mr. Sosso about the facility's use and add it to the format, and then that can just be plugged into what we already have.
Any more questions? Comments? Okay, athletics? We deny, but athletics, we need...
We, we deny, but athletics meeting, uh, this, this needs, so CNI. Go ahead.
Oh, um, I just wanted to officially, I guess, tell the community as well as the board members that, um, the boys' basketball team has a couple of home games next week on Tuesday and Wednesday at 4:00 PM. And the girls' basketball team is home the following week, I believe, February 6th, also at 4:00 PM. Um, I'm going to try my best to be there and I would love to see some of the board members and the community there as well. Cheer on the team. High school, sorry.
Okay, uh, CNI.
Uh, curriculum instruction met on the 23rd of January, virtually. Uh, we have many things on the agenda tonight that we discussed that night. Bradley Elementary School will be partnering with the New Jersey Coalition of Inclusive Education for free resources and training that'll cost nothing to the district. MLK students will have tuition approved for visual arts programs at Arts High from February 6th to May 8th. The total cost will be $905. Speech, uh, speech therapy, Connections LLC will providing professional development on March 21st for speech therapists. Uh, the total cost of that will be $1,650 and that is paid for through the idea funds. Wage Women and Girls Educational International will be hosting sessions for female athletes at Asbury Park High School from January to June at no cost to the district. Zeta Epsilon Lambda Chappa Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity will be offering SAT and PSAT tutoring for Asbury Park High School students interested in college that also will be at no cost to the district. Uh, the Reston Club are nude, they're, um, uh, with Beat the Streets for the 2024, 2025 year from March to June 25th, also at no cost to the district. Well, Spring Center for Prevention will provide life skill programming for grades three and six through eight from January to December, no cost to the district. Steen Park Academy will be providing STEM enrichment for physics and computer science at MLK from January to February. The total cost will be $5,975 and that will be paid for through the grant fund. And we have lots of school trips going out in the next, um, time here and here and all the trips are free except for the busing that we pay for. Uh, that concludes my report.
Any questions or comments? Uh, next is personnel.
We don't talk about personnel and.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna say personnel did meet today and went over, uh, staff appointments.
No questions or comments?
Yep.
I would like to.
Mr. Rogers, if I may, before you go on with the agenda, I just wanted to mention that January is School Board Recognition Month and, um, I didn't wanna read this whole, um, resolution from school boards, but I think, um, myself and I hope they board members join me in thanking all the school board members throughout the state of New Jersey that serve our communities and our children. Um, it is a time-consuming task, it's volunteer, and I think we all appreciate the work that, uh, school board members do in, in this district and the entire state of New Jersey.
Thank you, Ms. Lisinski. Let's, um, move on to public participation. In accordance with Board Policy 0167, the Asbury Park School Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment in educational issues and other matters of importance and provides members of the public with the opportunity to express themselves in school matters of community interest. The public comment portion of this meeting is not a question and answer session and all public comments shall be directed to the board president or the presiding officer of the, of the meeting. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the presiding officer and provide his or her name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if, uh, applicable. All public comments shall be directed to the presiding officer and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the forebarn rules or interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed from the meeting. Thank you.
Good evening.
It's very welcome.
Sheena Brazil, 1200 Jefferson Street, Asbury Park.
Music.
Sheena, do you hear me? Hear me now? Sheena Brazil, 1200 Jefferson Street, Asbury Park. Okay, uh, you pick up a coasting paper to read what's going on in the community and you come across the article signed, the, um, the district about the acting superintendent about suing, I know y'all can't give me an answer on this, uh, suing three current board members about, you know. How is it supposed to work when the acting superintendent? How is it supposed to work when the, the act- the superintendent is suing three current board members for putting out lies and false information during their campaign? Will evidence charges come against these three board members and will? And if they, will they be removed? What happens? Can y'all work together? Yeah, evidently we cannot work together around here. Then we have the junior president that's suing the district and the acting superintendent for getting, for not getting the position he was not qualified to get. From my understanding, he was working part-time in the district and how would that have worked had he got a position? We've got, if he'd have been mayor of the township, he took off, working part-time. And then you have ex-employees coming to the district that have not in the district, suing the district because they said, um, and some of the board members because the kids are not being educated in Asbury Park. Okay? But then you have community members out here suing some board members when they call them a missing character, but from what they, their past history, there's stuff that's coming to question, okay? So now somebody else say something about it, you wanna sue them because of something you have done in the past that comes back going through now? And then you have ex-board members who supposedly don't like each other. You had a problem with the board, with the board member that was on board. They had brought evidence charges against them. Now y'all think it's Steve? I'm shaking my head on that one because I don't understand it. To me, it's all a bunch of frankenackel, excuses, BS, bull crap, bull sugar, with some sea sauce sprinkled on top. It's all personal. And you know the sad part about all this is? Our kids still not get education, get education. That's the sad part, it hurts the kids. So I don't know where all this money come from, all these lawsuits going on around here. But my last hearing that nobody had money for anything around here. So we need to get y'all act together, y'all need to start getting along. Pray to Jesus, please.
Thank you, Ms. Lisinski.
Nina Summerlin, 1101 Bangs Avenue. Um, I just have a question in regard to two things. One was you did a report about the finances. I know that there's been grants that I've submitted to the school district in regards to like resource officers that we no longer have in our district. But there was an opportunity for us to apply for a grant that would pay their salaries. Have we applied for that? Have we attempted to apply for that? What is our plan? There is, and I have a list of grants that I can give you, Wendy, um, that we can apply for in this district and bring into the community. This way it doesn't always have to be, the district has to find this money to provide this opportunity. We can apply for that grant to pay for these services in our district on our own. The other question I have is, you guys were talking about signage, um, in areas of, of the community. Um, Ms. Barbara, I know you dealt with a lot of the stuff when it comes to city stuff. In their, their applications, you do have to provide, like if you want signage out, you do have to provide a sample of what the signage is supposed to be that's gonna be presented. So you do know ahead of time what's going to be out there. So it's not a matter of saying, well, we don't know what the signs are gonna look like or what's gonna be advertised. It's in the application, submit your information, submit a sample of what the poster's gonna be or the flyer's gonna be, and you know it above hand before it's actually out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Summer.
Test me, test me much. Hey, Kellwin Anderson, 405 First Avenue. Um, my concern, uh, taxes. Taxes, can you hear me? Okay, taxes. Can you hear me? Hello, okay, can you hear me? Okay, my concern is about the taxes. The taxes for the homeowners and for the people who are renting here in Asbury, they're going up and up. Um, my suggestion, I would like for some kind of freeze on these raises that you give to people here. You give a raises and it's coming on us, we gotta pay for this. And I also would like the board to consider notifying the homeowners when you give somebody a raise. Um, or some sort of audit or something because you're going up with the taxes and people can't live here. If people can't live there, how are we gonna pay taxes for the kids to go to the schools? You know, I mean, I'm just saying, you know, um, when you consider giving raises, give us a justification why you're giving those raises. And that's suggesting for the freeze on raises, it's getting ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Felicia Simmons, West, um, President and Executive Director, Westside Community Center School Avenue, Asbury Park. Can you hear me, can you hear me?
Speak louder.
I can. Felicia Simmons, Westside, Felicia Simmons, Westside Community Center, Asbury Park School Avenue. Uh, most of the things that most people said they, I was gonna address tonight about freezes on raises and addressing the budget. Uh, but I also wanna speak about me testifying last week, uh, in Trenton, um, in front of the Department of Education and listening to people speak about the assessment and the fact that we're about to lose $13 million and close to $20 million over the last few years. Um, we spoke about listening to the problem of everyone else. I addressed that Asbury doesn't have that same problem where we don't have the funds. But we have the problem where our kids aren't receiving the basic, um, needs of the child across the state. Uh, suggested to them and also started to work with some people that I met at this meeting is a bill of rights for, um, basic needs for the children of Asbury Park. Because we know what they're pushing for. With the sale of our buildings and the display of our things, it's for a regionalized school and to get away from home rule, which is they call it. Um, I'm not a fan of it and neither should a taxpayer here in Asbury Park be a fan of, um, giving away our rights as people who live here to dictate what our educational needs of our children are. But we should have the basic because I hear people saying that they only get $13,000 to $16,000 per kid, but they have one-on-one, right? Um, AI, I mean, IT, right? They have books in their libraries, they have these programs and these programs, and they don't get a third, about a third of what we get. So we should start and, and also with the raises on our max, right? On the budget, which I don't, everybody's paid well here, even though it's still expensive to live in New Jersey. But our kids don't have, um, IT, right? They don't have the things, the basic needs that our district should have or our kids should have. So we should start from there and putting in these from there and then work down, right? Uh, because it's, it's, the kids are the top and, and everybody else is the bottom. So that's where we should be starting in our assessments. And then also, I agree with the lawyer, you should put a specific policy in on about signage because then it's not into the, the personality of the person sitting there at the time. It is in writing and even after the people leave here on board, somebody else comes in, you say, uh, president and somewhere for the next generation of people to stand on. So put it in writing, put it for, for everybody to use and make it unfair. I mean, make it fair and unique across, I mean, fair even across the board. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, we can close public participation. Can we go over our monthly, uh, report?
Hello, uh, we just have one, um, for this, for the month of December and, um, it was, um, it was, we only had one, so that's good.
Uh, superintendent report?
No report this time.
Mr. Peter, don't you wanna mention, uh, your strategic, or do you wanna wait?
Yeah, without further discussion, and that'll be discussed at the next board meeting because it'll be more, more elaborate at the next meeting.
State maintenance report?
I have no report for this month.
Okay, can we have acceptance of minutes? The board approves the minutes of the regular meeting held December 19th, 2024.
02?
I'm sorry, is this just for A or is this for 12A, B, and C? Mr. Rogers? This is just for A or 12A, B, and C?
For A. We had, yeah, some members that weren't here, so this is just right. Roll call.
Ms. Ackerman? State? Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr., hmm, you're not here, sorry. Ms. Lisinski?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Glassman? Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you.
The board admits for the closing execs since, uh, December 19th, 2024.
I'm moving.
Second.
Roll call.
This is for 12B, right? Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Lisinski?
Yes.
Dr. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, see. Motion to the second?
Move it.
Two.
Roll call.
Ms. Ackerman? Yes. Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
This is B?
C.
C? I'm sorry.
Special. January 2nd?
Yeah, uh, yes.
Mr. Lauterach? Ms. Lisinski?
Yes.
With Dr. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
And Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Rogers, before we start, uh, the regular agenda, I'd like to, uh, bring up a motion from executive session.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Lisinski.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the board attorney, board secretary, and architect to proceed with the necessary steps to prepare for the sale of the Dorothy McNish Center Building and the maintenance building on Second Avenue.
Second.
Oh wow.
Discussion, move this way out.
Discussion, please. So as, as part of the preparation for the sale of the maintenance building, I would like the part of that preparation to be where the, uh, maintenance, maintenance building, the, the, maintenance will be at if, if the building is sold, what the cost will be to buy any equipment, pole barns, et cetera, in order to move maintenance, and also if the. And also if the place is going to be where the tennis courts are, that there has to be some agreement reached in writing prior to the sale, any sale of the maintenance building.
Uh, can I further that discussion? What it has to do with the tennis courts?
Because the pole barn, if they plan to do one, will be, will go where the tennis courts are planned.
Why wouldn't you use the facility over there that's parking lots and other areas at Barack Obama?
Again, this has to be all planned out. If you have another place to put it, this has to, there has to be a plan written on what's going to happen to the maintenance apartment.
No, I don't, I just didn't, I don't know anything about that part of the, any discussion about using that property for that. That's all I asked. But as I said, in preparation, are the necessary steps? So you can include that in the necessary step. What are the necessary steps?
And also, the district may be selling Barack. So you have to determine, you can't sell Barack and the maintenance building. It has to be one or the other.
I'm making a motion to authorize the board attorney, the board secretary, and the architect to proceed with the necessary steps to prepare for the sale of the Dorothy McNish Center and the maintenance building. That's what my motion is.
Right, and I'm adding to make sure that preparation includes what I just spoke about.
Yes, you're saying preparation of where to put the items, I understand.
And what it will cost and...
I understand that, that's part of preparation.
Building for X, for, for, let's say, three, $3 million and it costs $2 million to move it.
I understand. We've had estimates before of what it was going to cost to move also. So we can go back to our old estimates and have some ground, someplace to start and work from there. Yes, sir.
Right, fine. And I would just say that, you know, uh, we should look into, if we're gonna get a pole barn, uh, look into a shit service with the city because they may have a use for, for that, that old barn as well. So that way it's not all on us, the, the cost. But that's, it'll be part of planning and seeing what happens.
You're extending things far beyond what we've ever discussed. I'm going to leave my motion the way it is. And let's vote on it like that. And if there's something that comes up, we can come back and revisit it. But let's get started. We've been talking about this for almost a decade. Can we please get started on doing some of this? So that we can plan for the future and our budget that's going to crush us next year?
Move it.
Roll call.
Ms. Ackerman?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Lauteracher?
Yeah.
Ms. Lesinski?
Yes.
Dr. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, as state monitor, I'm going to add to that motion. That preparation should include the, the cost to move the maintenance building to another area at all costs, including, uh, land, whole, the buildings and things like that.
We'll, we'll add it to the, uh, the motion. Uh, and we'll continue to make sure this goes to buildings and grounds to get all this information to formulate. Thank you. While we're on that subject, uh, we had a discussion, um, and I think we should look, because this budget is going to be the most exhaustive, uh, crushing to this, to this district. I think we should look to have a March, uh, town hall meeting that would actually give all the residents all the information as to what has been going on in this district, what we're expecting to do, how far are we expecting to go. Uh, there's anecdotal information that some people in the community have put out, you know, uh, they've talked about pilots, they've talked about, uh, issues with, uh, our buildings. Uh, so I'm asking that the finance committee, uh, lead to put together a, uh, town hall meeting for March 1st, uh, at the high school, where we have enough people, uh, 10 o'clock, I think will be good in the morning. And we make sure we get everyone involved to think about putting together this, this budget so it's the most transparent we've ever been. Uh, are there any discussions?
Yeah. Um, so I have a couple of questions. First, the structure of a town hall meeting doesn't seem to be an opportunity that we can engage in, right? We can't have back and forth Q and A session with the community on anything at any time. So that by virtue, by nature, by, by definition, a town hall is something like that. So I would ask that the, the plans for this be very clear. I mean, my understanding of the policy is that the only single individual who can speak on behalf of the district is the superintendent. Uh, we, we, no individual school board member can speak or answer a question, so I'm just, I just am raising that as a question, I guess, as to what we envision this being. Do we envision this being a financial report by the superintendent of the budget as it stands and proposed cuts or changes? Or, um, just another board meeting? Uh, so that was my question.
Yeah. Yeah, um, Ms. Ackerman, the board in the past has had, um, town hall meetings. I'm just thinking, Mr. Lauteracher and Ms. Lesinski may remember, um, probably four or so years ago, uh, at the, one of the churches. Uh, and my recollection of that is that it was an open dialogue, um, by board members and, and the public. But to your question or concern, Ms. Ackerman, the board, by virtue of having a town hall meeting, can kind of authorize board members to speak directly to members of the public at that meeting in public? Because it would be, it would also be technically a public, publicly noticed board meeting. Because the fact that we're having a quorum present and we're talking about board business, it would be a regular, regularly noticed public board meeting. The format of it, though, will be a little different than if you're gonna run it the same way you've done in the past. The format itself would be a little different to, to allow dialogue. And it's understood that by virtue of the fact that it is a noticed board meeting, that board members can speak freely, um, and address any concerns, uh, in particular that, that residents may, may bring to the microphone.
Okay, I guess I would ask you then, it, it, the way I've read the policies in, in terms of how, so if... I, I guess my concern with that is we're going to be talking about something that's very, very, very important. And also it's, we're talking about a little more than 30 days from today. So unless we're planning on having an all-day session between the board and, the full board and the superintendent, I don't know what answers we're gonna have for our constituents.
That's a different issue.
It is a different issue, but I, so, but it, it ties to my current issue of who's gonna answer the questions, right? Are we gonna take turns? Will the questions be submitted in advance? What if we don't agree on an issue that, that someone's asking us about? I, I guess I have some concerns about it as, um, in, in terms of our board governance and the way we present ourselves. And also the potential for someone saying something that we're then held to that not everyone agrees to. Right? I, I just have some real concerns about an open dialogue in this sense.
I, I, you know, from a legal perspective, I don't view it any differently than, uh, board member giving their opinion here in this room. Um, certainly, to the extent that you have a concern that it may not line up, the format may not line up with policy, the board could vote essentially to either suspend its current policy to allow that particular meeting and that particular format, whatever the board decides the format should be. But there are, to the extent that the board wants to have a public dialogue with members of the public, there are mechanisms that we can put in place to allow free exchange of ideas between board members and, uh, interactions with the, with the public at that meeting. It's certainly possible and we can do it so that your concerns are addressed as it relates to the format and, um, and so that we can have an open discussion with community members.
Yeah, we worked well before, you know, as long as we all know what our rules are.
Yeah, right now...
And March 1st is a Saturday, is that what you...
Yeah.
And basically, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say a couple of words and then turn it over to, uh, the finance chair. Um, this is not a situation of us confirming anything. It's a, I think, a valuable tool that many people in this district have not been getting full information about the operations of this district. Say, the relationships with pilots, to say the relationship with, uh, different other items that have gone into it. What we want to do is make sure we give factual information that is substantiated. Uh, the board members, as in discussions that we have here, public discussions on, on the, on budgets, is the same, uh, dialogue that we're gonna have with ourselves. But we will engage the community who has made it their importance to know what is affecting their increase in taxes and the situations going on. So...
That, that's fine, but I think what you just said goes to that. We, you know, we have no control over pilots. So I, I would be to the, I'm, I'm uncomfortable to begin with. So I'm just asking that, one, that the attorney take a look at our current policies and see if we need to change anything. And two, that there be very, very open and early discussions among the board as a whole as to exactly what topics we're gonna be discussing, how the format is gonna be run, and how we're gonna answer these questions. And I think that's gonna involve the superintendent as well, I didn't mean to leave you out. Um, as a group, before anything is, is decided. Because we are a whole when it comes to things like this. And so these are my concerns, I put them on the record, I've asked the attorney. Seems to be a fair question what I'm asking, so I would just ask that, that's how we handle this.
Any other discussions?
Uh, what time? I'm just trying to put my calendar.
Around 10:00.
10:00 AM?
Um, just to fill people in for the initial idea of how we're gonna approach this because we have five weeks left to do this. Um, and the plan is for the finance committee to meet, uh, next weekend. Where you're gonna do an initial outline of the topics to be covered. Um, we envision a brief historical background of, um, how we got where, to where we are. Uh, educate the community on, on some school funding issues, why the cost of educating students is what it is. Uh, what surrounding district, districts, um, are actually paying to educate their kids. Um, how the school funding formula works, how we've been impacted by S2. Um, where that puts us now. Um, and again, we need everyone to get on the same educated page of what this all does. There's a lot of confusion about, uh, how pilots, um, how those pilot payments are calculated, both in terms of the state funding formula and what it does, um, for, for the school budget or what it doesn't do. Um, but we're gonna have, use the resources that we have to make as clear and simple a presentation we can. And then from there, discuss the challenges that we have, discuss what our current budget has looked like for this year, how much gets spent on different, uh, in different categories, and where we can look to reduce the expenses, uh, cover this, uh, budget hole. And really open it up, it's a building opportunity to, once we've set the framework and the foundation, it's a building opportunity for the public with real information and real numbers to say, what does this community want to see from its public education system? And based on that, we can go back and complete all of our work on building a budget, um, that this community can accept and be proud of within the constraints that we have. So once the finance committee meets and puts an initial outline together, we will then send that to the full board to ask for additional input if we're missing topics. Um, is, certain things should be highlighted. Um, and then put together, um, a set of, with, and we're gonna need the administration's help on this, put together a good set of slides and information, uh, that's understandable and can be handed out, people can take home and work with. Um, after the meeting, we'll set up, uh, a special email address for the community to send in comments and suggestions. Um, and have a, really a joint effort on addressing the challenges that we're facing. Um, we've spoken to the monitor, our two monitors are willing to help us, um, through this process, put these numbers together and, um, and move it forward. It's a short amount of time to do it, but I think if we, um, keep the framework in mind and know that we can't overload everyone information with information, but everyone has to have the same information and understanding at the end of the day so we can move forward.
Correct. Yeah. No, that sounds great. I think then what I would ask is that there be a meeting of the board about the budget. Because if we're all gonna sit in front of the community and have an understanding of the budget, then I think we need a special meeting for the board to fully understand the budget. Just like the one that Don moved for our last meeting.
Well, we won't be at a prospective budget for next year yet at that point in time. This is really talking about where we're going to go, so it's not a prospective discussion.
No, but it's talking about the current budget, which we don't all have the same level of understanding of. Right?
No, but, but what we're gonna have is another budget meeting. And prior to us passing the budget, which we will send to the county, we all have to have that discussion. What we're doing is giving an informational meeting to the community. And all those things will be added into, which you will now have also their feedback as to what they're expecting when you're making decisions as to closing out this budget. And then we can submit the budget to the county. Right now, uh, you know, I, I, I don't express to, to, you know, make me like Ms. Lesinski. Me and her may have a different opinion on a certain building or anything or, you know, what we're doing. What we're saying is we want to get as much information together so all information is provided to the community. They can give us feedback. And then we can actually make the decision as to whether or not you are gonna make an individual decision to pass this budget to go into the, uh...
No, I get it.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, thank you. I, I'm just saying, it, it goes back to my earlier point that we're all on the absolute same page and all have the exact same understanding of the budget as it stands so that we can make this presentation. So if, if you're gonna submit, share all of the details of the presentation with enough time for us to have a meeting, if need be, a special meeting of the finance committee or especially, actually, it would have to be a meeting of the board so everyone can attend so that we're all 110% on the same page before we stand up in front of the citizens and present. It, this is all I'm asking. So I, I was just revising, revisiting the, the, the motion that Don made in the last meeting that we have a special meeting to go over the budget as it stands today.
Right now, the budget just got opened yesterday. We will not have any final numbers, uh, until the 26th, I think, February, if this is, February 6th, when the government will give us our numbers. Uh, right now, if we want to have a special meeting to go over, but I think Ms. Lesinski, I mean, uh, Ms. Glassman has said, any information that we're putting together in the presentation will be forwarded to the whole board. Any questions that will be able to be asked, our board will be able to ask before that meeting. But we're gonna have continual meetings going on. And I hope no one, uh, actually represents what their personal, uh, opinions are. These are facts of numbers of what we anticipate something can be purchased for, what can't be purchased for, what we're looking to do. Right now, all these things are factored into the process. And like I said, if we, we wanna look at another, uh, a special meeting, uh, or even have a more formative meeting on the 20, what is our next board meeting? What is our next board meeting?
That's what I was gonna ask, what state the, uh, budget process will be in by the time we... That's what I was gonna ask, what state the budget process will be in by the time we meet at the end of February. I mean, that'd be a good time to update information about how everything's going.
I think we get the number, the state numbers the 25th, 27th?
Yeah, but you already know, you already have your general budget before that. I mean, you'll kinda know where you stand, because you're either gonna, yeah, you know what your expense is. You're basing it on a flat, flat number, the same as last year. So you'll know where you, kinda where you stand before you know where you stand, in other words.
And our address.
So the monthly meeting, we should?
Yeah, the monthly meeting, we should be able to have. And we can kinda finalize everything, but this will be a progress, and with all the.
We'll know what we're planning on if everything stays the same. Okay, so that will be ready, usually by the end of the month, next February.
Right. Everybody needs to know that this is gonna involve a lot, a lot of work and heavy lifting by everybody, and there are gonna be quick turnarounds. You know, we are committed to sharing the information with everyone in the drafts as we go through. But again, we can't take days to come back, because we only have four weeks to do this whole thing.
Yeah, I think that's a step we need to make, that the charge to us in finance is gonna be, we have to be sharing all of that quickly and responding if we're not going to have a meeting where all nine can see everything all at once. So, we're gonna have to commit to that if we go there.
So, can we all agree to, do I have a second? First and second? On a motion for a meeting on, a special meeting on March 1st, my mind is going.
We just need consensus, don't we? We don't need a, yeah, I think everybody agrees that March 1st.
Okay. If we could just add to the motion that the board secretary is authorized to advertise that meeting, that would be great.
I have a draft. I just need, we're at Esberry Park High School, the auditorium.
Auditorium. The auditorium.
10 AM.
Sorry.
10 AM to.
Shouldn't we table the motion until the attorney's able to look at the policies and confirm that there's no conflicts with what we've already got in place?
No, so. Well, we can set the policy aside. There's no policy exactly for a town hall meeting. It's a different format. We've done several times. And if we agree to have it, we can have it. It's, it's.
Is that fair?
It's still gonna be published as a public meeting, because the board will be present.
And sometimes they were successful, and sometimes they weren't. But I think if we're prepared and we do what we have to do, it'll be a success.
So this is a motion for a special board of education slash town hall meeting on March 1st at 10 AM, Esberry Park High School auditorium. And who first and who second? Ms. Ackerman? No. Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Wataraku?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Dr. Penn?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Review of the regular agenda meeting. The superintendent, yes.
Can we get a consent agenda for B1 to B6?
I'll move it, but I'd like to postpone B3, number five, until we move it, until next month. The, not that one, the other policies. I'm sorry, B5, number three, the policies and regulations until next month. I'll make the motion and table those for next month. Remove those until next month.
Which ones are you moving to table?
The new mandated regulations, not the title regulations, the ones that are on the agenda.
So item three, you're moving to table?
No, it's. I think it's B6, if I'm not mistaken. B6, no. B5, number three.
All of them.
Yeah, there are ones that we haven't seen yet. They were just put on the agenda tonight, this afternoon. Before the first, so we can have a first reading. The consent agenda, but I'd like to remove B5, number three, till next month, so the board can review those policies for the first reading.
Barbara, the regulate?
Yes, because the board has to reprove those regulations also.
I'll say.
Rocco. Question, question to ask, question to come?
I'd like to go back to the staff appointments again. It's mandated for PE, it's gonna be mandated for teacher. But if I'm in favor of a hiring freeze for building up our reserve, the music and art would not be mandated, is that correct? Not that you have to agree with me, but is it mandated?
They should have, for a TE, they should have those subject areas. Also, we noted that these classes have already been scheduled, and kids are not going to them because we don't have teachers. So they need to fill those spots. Yeah, it's also prep areas for teachers, so teachers are not getting any prep, so they're working straight through.
Also.
Paying them.
We're in discussion right now, so my, also, I wanted to raise a concern about CUSAC, to the extent that you don't have adequate number of teachers, that may be a factor as well.
So we wanna go down to motion to table B5, three. Ms. Ackerman? This is the policy. Yes.
Yes.
I vote favor, yes. Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Dr. Penn?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Then we have a motion for a consent agenda, B1 through six. Mrs. Lozinski, first motion, I need a second. Date to motion?
Yes, I do.
I need a second. Okay. Ms. Ackerman?
Sorry, this is to approve everything else?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Wataraku? Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Dr. Penn?
Yes.
Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Ms. Glassman?
Yeah.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, next.
Can I get a consent agenda with a C1, a motion to C4?
Yes.
Need a second.
First.
Second?
Second.
The business action, I need a second.
I'll say, I do have a question. During the last few months, several of the months, we've had quite a few transfers in the budget. Can you give me just a general explanation of why all those transfers? I haven't experienced that many in all the years I think I've been here. And is it, I'm not quite sure what kind of explanation could explain.
Well, we did movement of teachers, so you moved to Bradley. We have to, but your money was at Thurgood. So a lot of those transfers were to make sure that every person was coded correctly. So I had to move the monies around to make sure that you're at Bradley, Dom's at Thurgood, you know what I mean? So when I knew the budget.
So that's why a salary meant to a salary, and a consultant went to a consultant. And there's a couple other ones I was concerned about, but that explains quite a.
Like custodial peers, a lot of them, yeah, secretary with the movement, you know. The monies has to follow the person, so I had to do the transfer between buildings.
Any more questions, concerns?
Make a motion.
Travel and professional development, is it grant funded? Travel and professional development grant fund, thank you.
I wanted to, that's what you reminded me, in professional development, there was no cost assigned to any of those. No cost, there's no money in the money column.
No, we wanted to put it on there, so just in case a year or six months from now, you guys ask, well, how many, what did we do for professional development?
Oh, okay, so this is the point, this is the plan, these individuals are planning to go there, and each individual.
That way we can track, regardless if it has a cost or not, we wanna keep a track of all professional development.
Okay, so when the one, let's say, Mr. Sosa's going to Atlantic City for his conference, will that be approved with the cost?
Yes.
At the time that happens?
Yes.
That explains it. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Ms. Ackerman?
I vote yes to all except for item eight. I vote no.
Vote H?
Uh, C3, number eight.
Ms. Clark?
I'm voting yes on everything except 1A, bills and claims that are changed to college achieve charter. And I'm voting no on number eight, the program modeling proposal, on C3, C3, number eight.
Can I just make a point order, just to interject, I wanted to make the board aware of one thing. College achieve, I know that some of you are voting no. I just wanted to remind you that under the ethics code, you're supposed to follow court orders and law. So I just wanna mention that to you as you vote.
Mr. Grillo?
Yeah, I'm voting yes to everything except C1, 1A, college achieve, the payments to them. Also, any payments to utility bills, and also no on C3, eight.
Mr. Wataraku?
Yes, everything but no on number eight on C3.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes, on everything, no on consultants, paid consultants.
Dr. Penn?
Yes, on everything except 1A, anything to do with college achieve, and on C3, eight, no.
Ms. Ricks?
Okay, I am abstaining on number two, page C1.
C1, two?
Uh, number two.
Okay.
I am voting no on C2, number five. I am voting no on C3, number eight. Everything else, yes.
But you're abstaining on anything to do with the ward?
Oh, almost forgot, thank you. I'm abstaining on anything that may have to do with the Jones ward or wards.
Ms. Glassman?
Yes, except for Jones.
My niece, my niece and her husband.
C1A to the college achieve, and no, C3, number eight.
Mr. Rogers?
No on C1A, anything to do with college achieve, and no on C3, number eight.
Thank you. Ms. Ricks?
I didn't wanna reduce myself, but anything having to do with the Jones wards.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting, or does the state monitor have something?
Oh, I have something to say. Regarding college achieve, I would like to read you a paragraph in the court, the court decision that you just received. "The equities here do not fall in favor of the charter school. The district paid the charter school all amounts due in 2324 school year, and the charter school has not argued in its motion that the district has failed to pay the charter school for the amounts due in 2425. There is no present violation of initial decision, granting emergent relief dated July 16, and therefore, no reason to levy a sanction against the board. I would like the board to thank me for overriding them each time, so that you are not sanctioned by the administrative law judge."
I will thank you from the bottom of my heart that you have enabled us to get a favorable decision from a judge.
But he did override us.
So in that, I'd like.
And I will continue to override your decision on not to pay college achieve tonight.
Which allows us to continue to stand on principle and you to protect us from ourselves.
So overriding the board on number eight on page C3. I think it's very important for the board to understand what savings they can achieve in the buildings and grounds department by this study. And once the study is completed, and you have real numbers, then you can decide what you really, what you wanna do. So I am overriding the board on number eight, because I think it's something that could be very cost effective for the board and helping to reduce the budget for next year.
Okay.
Did, did. I guess the state monitor, did you look at the data that was provided by the administration? I mean, I mean, that clearly, that clearly showed definitive and substantial savings, so that we as a board can see that. And I think we as a board don't disagree with when, when we're going to be looking at support staff positions, there's going to have to be savings there. Personally, I've, I've worked for organizations where there's been complete outsourcing, and I think there's, there's quality issues in doing that. But my question will just be, we have been relatively well informed by the administration to have that debate, if people disagree with me. So I was just asking if you looked at that as well. Okay. And there will be a debate down the road, when you try and plug the 12 and a half million dollar hole in the budget. And that, there will be debate, but you need actual numbers to have that debate. That's all.
Yeah, two things. We also must keep in mind that that study would displace a lot of residents, most residents that live here in town, so we have to keep that in mind also. But I also wanted to bring to the board's attention that the homeowners association is having a meeting in February. is having a meeting in February. And from my understanding, board members will speak on behalf of the board. Now, do we as a board decide which members will speak for us or will it be our superintendent? The homeowners.
Right now, we're.
Board members.
We're going to discuss that meeting to see. Right now, the information's going to be voluminous. And I don't think we should, you know, we should talk to them to see what type of schedule or anything and we'll make a follow-up decision. But we'll have the finance committee and the superintendent look to speak on information. And that's what I want everybody to continue to understand. We're not speaking on the terms of the board and making decisions. Anything that comes out of this board, I hope is of information that has been provided and stuff that's operable or information that is helpful to understand what our budget situation is.
Well, you do understand my policy. The superintendent is the one who speaks for the district. And they're the ones that should be invited to the homeowners to talk unless the board selects individuals to speak on behalf of the body. And what the situation is, is I received an email from the homeowners that the board president and board members were already committed to go to a meeting and we had discussed it. So I think that's why Ms. Ricks brought it up.
No, we're going to be talking to the homeowner association because there were time limits and issues. We said we'd be interested in doing it. Just to let them know what we're going to get in further discussion because as I told the homeowner association person, we were interested, you know, making sure we're communicating. But also the time limits, you know, 15 minutes.
Well, maybe you should just invite them to the.
No, that's, I told them that.
And that's what you should do.
I told, yeah.
Politely just say we can't make it. We're going to be going at March 1st.
This community extends far beyond the number of homeowners that are members of the homeowners association. And that's why we wanted to do this town hall so that the whole community gets to attend this meeting and hear this stuff all at the same time.
Do that.
Okay. Not going to those. Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I, yes.
I.
I, 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 I too.
Thank you, everyone.